Please rise for the House of Representatives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For Roll Call.
Councilmember Gruber, councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Janicic.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook, councilmember Hadfield.
Here.
Councilmember Spurrier.
Here.
Councilmember Adams. Mayor House.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse tonight's absentees.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions excused. Any updates to the agenda? One would be there's a typo, or a couple typos really, but the March 13th minutes is actually 2018. The consent agenda tonight has checks 15660 to 15675 and EFTs as follows: count payable in the amount of $90,032.
That's done. 320.47.
Thank you. $20,032.37 and payroll as of May 20th, 2018 in the amount of $20,225.53. And then the minutes from the 8th and 13th of March, May 8th, and then the administrative meeting on May 8th.
Make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda with the correction of the $90,032.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next will be citizen comments on non-census items.
My name is Dick Watts, 503 East Washington Avenue, and I'd like to thank the city staff and the city crew for the great job they've done supporting the volunteers in the cemetery preparing for Memorial Day. Cemeteries are looking great, and we have, we got great participation this year for most of the lodges, and we have one lodge left to do their work, and that's the Eagles, and they'll be up there on Thursday, so we're very proud of the works that being done up there. Once again, Memorial Day weekend, the Heritage Club will have their hospitality tent there, and we've already had some notes come through, forced emails asking where people are buried, and we're going to address that. We've told them, we'll come to the tent, we'll fill in the blanks. But also, I would like to thank the council for supporting the location for the memorial for the Croatia Monument. You know, there's a little conflict with the groups which happens, and the monument is due for dedication on Saturday of this week. The Spence port, the flag bolts will be put in tomorrow, the monument will be set tomorrow night, and we'll do a little landscaping to dress it up on Friday. We've got rakers coming to rake the area, and hopefully we'll have some chairs out on the road that's in front of that. That's been graded, by the way, and looking good. And so, we should be ready to go on Saturday, and the target is that we can have a little hospitality base camp for the donors at 2:00, and at 3:00, we'd go up and do the dedication. We have the council general from Croatia coming from Los Angeles, and the Croatian council from Seattle will also be here, so we'll have a pretty good crowd. And I'd like to invite the council to join us at that dedication. I think you'll kind of like what you see, and if you join us for the evening activities, we have Alma Ponsic coming, Alma's state-of-the-art with music and Croatian music, she's played for Congress, and then Queen of England and other notables. Most important is us right here in Roslyn, you know? But her music, she'll play for four hours nonstop, and she'll have two sets of choreographies in there, so it'll be well worth your time. So I just wanted to extend an invitation for you to join us at any one of the three functions: 2:00 at base camp, 3:00 up in the cemetery for the dedication, or 5:00 up in the Rondel Gem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to kind of tag in on that.
Could you state your name?
My name's Kelly Clift. I'm, I live in South Plow, but I'm here for the Episcopal Church. A group of us have gotten together, and you know, our church has been here since 1891, and we wanted to be more part of the Memorial Day celebration for the city, and so we got together and we were trying to brainstorm some different ways that we could be a part of it, to have a chance to remember some of the stories that our grandparents told us, and also, you know, teach our kids, our new people in town about our rich history. So the church is inviting you to join us on any of our celebrations on Sunday, the 27th. So the church service will be at 10:00. We'll be having a memorial time where people can light candles to remember their ancestors that have been here, there, anybody who's been lost in the line of duty, that sort of thing. Following the church service, everybody's invited to a luncheon, whether you come to the service or not. We're going to have a nice luncheon and an open mic for people to be able to share stories and memories and pictures and all that. About 2:00, we were going to gather in front of the Miners Monument. We got all the churches to agree to ring bells, and we were going to say prayer, maybe say a few things in front of the Miners Monument, and then make a way up to the cemetery to pay our respects there too. So we invite you to any or all of it, and hope to see some of you there for at least part of the festivities.
Thank you. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you going to be recording the stories that people? Have you thought about any way to like capture that? Or is it more just in terms of kind of people coming together?
It's more people coming together. It's pretty informal right now.
Okay.
But we just wanted to take the opportunity to start sharing the heritage before we lose some of the stories.
Right.
Any other citizen comments? Okay, then we'll move on to announcements, appointments, presentations. Pretty informal one. The chip seal project, Los Shaw, has asked that we exempt any noise ordinance. We're going to do that over three again. It doesn't affect much of Roslyn, up by Millie's house towards Ronald, and then get fair again. Tell me where I live.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm with the DOT.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I'm Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for the opportunity here. I'm Jeff Minnick. I'm with Washington State Department of Transportation out of the South Central Region in Union Gap near Yakima. I'm the design engineering manager, and just want to, it's more of an informal thing, but to inform you that we are going to fix our mistake and repave, and when I say repave, it's not chip seal again. You might see in there that they talk about a chip seal. We're not going to do that again. I don't want to go through that risk again. And we're going to grind out about two inches of the existing pavement and pave it back probably near end of July, early part of August, and take about 25 working days, and we, starting in Clealum, we'll go from Oaks Avenue area on up to the roundabout, skip over the roundabout, and then come up to about where the turnout burger area there is. Then we skip through Roslyn, and we'll go up to near Alaska, and start there and continue on through Ronald. So the nighttime is more for the Clealum area, but we hit the fringes here on the Roslyn end, the turnout burger. I recently was with the Kidattas County Commissioners, and we talked to them because Ronald doesn't really have a, maybe a formal process, maybe this isn't either, but those houses are right up next to the road, and we're going right through the town. So we made a decision, working with them, to do that during the daytime. So one end of Roslyn and the roundabouts will be at night. Skip through Roslyn, go to the other end of Roslyn, near Alaska, and start during the daytime and go all the way through Ronald to the other end, to the Forest Service boundary. So it's more of an informal thing, but we do want your input and any other information I can provide, I'd be happy to do that. The nighttime operation is Sunday night through Friday morning. We're not doing it on the weekends right now. Daytime, kind of looking at that, probably is very similar, and probably we do it mainly it's the traffic volumes on Clealum. And then during the chip seal, we had some lengthy backups. We don't want to reproduce that. You get quite a volume shift in traffic at the roundabout there going to some cadium thing, so we think you won't have as big a backups when you get to this area here. So nighttime down there, we'll put a lot of notice out with reader boards, and we're actually going to walk through, and we can do that through Roslyn too, more than happy to do that, just trying to pick the boundary and doing that with a flyer, telling, hey, we're coming to town, we'll do those types of things, just give their outreach and through Ronald also. So any other questions I can answer or more information?
You don't include the city of Roslyn as part of 903 because...
So, very good question. That is on a different schedule. Our plan is to, we have some ADA concerns in the Clealum area with American Disabilities Act with that, and so that's combined with the project in 2023 right now to repave down from 970 through Clealum up to Oaks to match in, kind of letting the city get their revitalization figured out, and maybe that'll get done before we come through, and then at the same time we would come up and finish, do Roslyn through here. So we would do that thing. So there's some ADA things through Roslyn we have to address ourselves. I noticed you're doing some of yourself, and that's great, so long ways off to change, but you know, I want, maybe however it goes, there could be some opportunity to work together on 2023 sidewalks, other improvements like that, but just...
When would be the right time to coordinate something like that for your folks?
Well, we work in a biennium phase, so July, basically end of June, or July 1st to July 1st every two years, so it'd be odd. So 2019, 2021, so it's probably the 2020 timeframe when we could get it addressed maybe in our biennium budget for, or biennium work scope for 2021. And then 2021, 2022 up to 2023, and then we'll get it included there. Earlier better, just to get some ideas flushed out, maybe there's some, some community engagement with you to kind of think of some ideas that we could work with on that.
Is this the kind of project that TIB would be interested in assisting, you know, the sidewalk park maybe and stuff like that?
Maybe. It could be possible. Can't hurt it, no, for sure. Any other questions?
There's one from Ronald the Lake as well.
Corrected the turnaround down the boundary there, yeah. Everything we chip sealed last year has come out, so, yeah. So any questions on why it failed? Because that might be on your mind, and I don't know.
I'm kind of wondering.
Yeah, I always think it's up. So chip seal, we kind of have two versions of it, if you want to call it. If you've driven SR10 lately, that is our traditional chip seal, held together well. So on that, we spread oil, hot oil, 150, 175 degrees, and it's cut, when I call it cut, it's mixed with water. So it's half oil, half water. Sometimes it's 60/40. You spread that oil, and you have a little more time because the water has to evaporate and then it has to set. So you have a little more time with that, and then you spread the chips on top of that, then you roll it, then you have to sweep it, and you have to come back the next day and sweep it. So there's a lot of sweeping involved. You can't strip it right away either. So that's our traditional way of doing it, very successful. So now we call it what we call hot seal. And the reason we call it hot, we use oil up to 350 degrees, and it's pure oil, so there's no water in it. So there's less time for putting the rock on. So it almost has to be immediate because the oil really has very little water in it, might have just traces of it, and you just have less time to wait for the oil to set up. So temperature's a big thing. You've got to get that oil hot enough, get these shady areas. And the other thing is we coat the chips with oil already, precoat them, so that they're already have that oil on them, and then when they hit the hot oil, they kind of seep themselves. We need the traffic to help you knead this in, we need warmer days. We've done it in Wall Wall, very successful. We've done it in the Yakima area, very successful, Shalane area, but for some reason, we just didn't hit that right time. We did this in July, late July, August timeframe, and thought it would be the warm time, but it just didn't, didn't work for us as well as we were hoping. So temperature plays a big factor, and we didn't quite make that happen. So we're working to fix our problem right now, so.
We did great to hear. We did great to hear that you guys are taking responsibility, saw the issue, and now actually working with the, working with the towns too during the nighttime. I just see, when I spread that, I was like, wow, it's, it's great to hear that you guys are taking initiative upon yourself, correcting it. Yeah, it's dangerous, and I pray that nobody gets hurt, but that is nice to hear that you guys are taking full responsibility for your action on this. And sorry that it did happen.
Yeah.
Just now we know that that can't, doesn't work here.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
So any other projects ever? Want to get ahold of me or?
In 2020.
Maybe 2019.
Twenty nineteen.
Just to get started.
Right.
Just how stuff goes here, right?
So I kind of walked through today with my wife, we had dinner here and walked through the town, just kind of see where's the sidewalk project going to be. It should be done by the time we get through, at least, you know, for the most part, there's some few things, but I don't know. So we won't have the issues of our asphalt trucks trying to get through your traffic control or things like that that could... So yeah. Yeah. Ever any questions about any projects on I-90 or anything like that?
Have a business card or any way to contact you?
I don't right now. I just kind of hurried on up here from work that, that I can most certainly email all of you, or email the mayor, or somebody, and maybe you can distribute that for me? That'd be great.
So the brick side of the street is not going to be done till after Labor Day, so that will actually, we do have a big construction project right on the road there.
We're halting.
The second, the second half of the...
So after Labor Day. Oh, okay.
But you guys say, you guys say on your report you should be done.
Considerably done.
Sixteen working days past.
Is there any coordination from that?
I would say 25.
What's that?
I heard you say 25 working days.
Yeah.
So they'll be done, but...
So the 16 days is for paving. And then there's about nine days worth of utility adjustments that we have in the Clealum area, some striping, pavement markings, crosswalks, things like that, cleanup, taking things out. So it was about nine days, but that's 16 days is for paving.
Well, they're doing crosswalks.
Well, we'll be doing demolition for a couple weeks too, so it'll be more than September.
Yeah, when I, when I came up and visited the city at Clealum, did kind of the same thing, I noticed you had a sidewalk project on, so I made sure we included it in our contract. There has to be coordination, just to make our contract, or where the, they're going to have to understand that there could be some delay, and maybe they have to figure out how to go around if possible, but it's kind of doubtful, but no reason they can't talk to each other and figure out a solution.
Well, we'll be cutting into the street that you are laying.
Well, we don't go through Roslyn.
For the bull boat. You're not going to go through Roslyn. Okay, because we're five minutes.
Yeah, that's not until 22.
There's more traffic moving through our construction area that he's worrying about.
So yeah, we're, we're waiting. If the city of Clealum decides they're going to move up, you know, we could move up. It's just a, right now, that's going to be scheduled for 2022. We will not work on Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays.
Sunday until 7:00 PM is when you can start.
Right, we start at 7:00 PM Sunday. It's highly likely they'll do that, but we give them the opportunity. If they get behind or things like that, we give them an opportunity to work a few more hours.
And then it would be till Friday mornings at 6:00 AM, right?
Correct, yeah. And the daytime would be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So Monday, Monday morning through Thursday evening.
No big trucks, I mean, can't...
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, William.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Safe travels.
Cutting into the street is time, actually.
I didn't know they were going to cut into the street.
Actually, for once.
Okay, so next we'll move on to AB 18033B, the public hearing on the 2018 budget amendment. And we'll just open up our hearing.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm Doug Kilgore from 145 North Fifth Street, and I just had some questions about the budget amendment, hoping that some of you could answer, or some of your staff. In particular, I was looking at the changes relative to forestry activity and stand management proceeds. And in this amendment, what it says here is we had a 45% increase in the expense on the forestry activity, or the expenses of the logging work. And we have, we're showing 118% for a $650,000 increase in the revenue. And my question is, can anyone explain to me what the basis of that is? What information do we have that suggests that much more revenue? What, what has happened that incurred the additional expenses? And have some of these, those expenses been incurred already? Are they already expenses that we have incurred? So I guess a group of questions, and I'm curious if any of you can answer and advise me, or advise all of us. Because it doesn't look, it doesn't, we don't see any, it looks like the numbers are just coming out of, out of the air, but maybe not.
Staff have any comment on that?
It's the estimate we got from the...
Yeah, I mean, we're getting this from the forester.
The estimate of what?
The expenses and the revenues.
Okay, so what, what changed?
The other was just a shot-in-the-dark estimate. This is an estimate from our contractor.
They actually put eyes on the ground, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, Eric has been up there.
So what was, what was, so what, what, I guess, what changed really in the, from the prior estimate?
That we have a real estimate. Before, we did not have a real estimate. It was just the best we could do with almost no information, and now the forester has had an opportunity to get up there, walk around, mark trees, figure out the roads, have an actual plan, and these are the numbers that he is estimating.
So then, is there, is there any kind of a project budget for the, for the entire effort that would show by categories where expenses are coming in and where, where income will be coming in?
Not that I have at this point, no.
Well, we, I'm not sure how much expense we've actually incurred already as we've digged on the roads, and then there's been the planning and the engineering.
Right, but I'm wondering, did any, were these, was this number that we got, was there anything with it that showed?
I don't have anything at this point. This is what the forester gave us, was the overall numbers of what we can expect.
So just a number, but no, no supporting information?
Right, it's just an estimate.
How do you, how do you evaluate that, I mean, as decision makers?
I mean, budgets are estimates, and this is our estimate from our contractor, who is the most knowledgeable source we have on this at this time. If you want, I can ask him and see if I can get a further breakdown for council. I'm sure he's done that work, just, I didn't ask it.
I'm sure it's not arbitrary.
I think it'd be helpful to know what, what's going into roads, what's going into rehab. Now, is it correct that you've eliminated all, all the expenses for rehabilitating the forest after the logging? So you're not going to do that?
Eliminated?
I don't think they eliminated.
Wasn't right up here.
So we, we talked about this at the Citizens Advisory Council meeting last week in terms of the budget and also with the logging, which these numbers were a surprise at that time also to me. I mean, that was the first time I'd heard of us actually making $1.2 million on our forestry activities. So I haven't seen anything specific, like you're asking, in terms of how that number was calculated from the forester. That would be helpful, obviously. In terms of the mitigation and restoration, we discussed that, you know, we don't necessarily, we want to know what the costs are, but we don't know yet because of what the actual logging activity, the road building, what are we going to need to mitigate for? So it's something that I know that they discussed in the CAC meeting in terms of trying to come up with some estimates, you know, which would obviously be helpful because there will be work that has to be done. As far as I understand, the restoration in terms of trails is not part of the logging project. It would only be road building in terms of if we are actually officially like decommissioning a road that is built, or abandoning, I think is the correct term. But I don't, but I don't think that that's been in the discussion, you know, we're not at that phase of that discussion.
So the roads that you're going to have to destroy after the logging, you haven't budgeted for that expense?
Well, and I guess, I mean, I don't know that roads are being destroyed, that it, that roads are actually being...
We're basically using the Alaska Alley as the road.
Right, that road's kind of getting refurbished for use.
We're not abandoning the Alaska Alley.
Right, but there are, there are some roads that are going to be put in for the purpose of doing the logging show that are going, that the permit will require that they be
Coming down.
Eliminated.
Correct.
Talking, talking to Michelle, she said, again, it was just between her and I, that they were going to be water burned and the roads were going to be taken, not taken out completely, but they were going to be unusable anymore. Decommissioned, yeah.
Right.
After the logger is done with the roads. That was always my understanding.
So then my, my other question was with, with the sidewalk project, I'm guessing that there's actually more information about that. It looks like the expense increased, but it appears that we got some additional funds from, that, there was an increase in the funding from, included in the budget amendment. Something, anyone kind of give me a general idea what the, what the overall impact of that is? I know that there were unexpected debt issues that may have incurred costs. Did we get some additional revenue to cover that, or are we just absorbing that extra cost? What's, what's the story with that?
There've been what, two change orders?
Yeah, two changeovers, change orders and some force account work at this point, which are not included in this budget amendment. This goes to the actual contracts that are written and in place at this time.
Okay, so, yeah, so...
And we would apply to TIB for any...
Yeah, TIB will cover change orders.
Right. So what's the, what's the increase of $269,000 in the TIB grant that's contained in the budget amendment?
That's the grant to cover the bids that came in. They're covering our bids. So the original estimate was to be around $427,000, but in the end, our lowest bidder was six, was, I don't remember, six something.
Yeah.
And then the 696 is what TIB is covering of that cost of the project.
So that's additional money than, in addition to money that was committed by TIB previously?
They actually committed the ability to give us more than that number. They'll cover a certain percentage of the project.
Okay, so that, so, so as the expenses float up, we get our reimbursement floats up?
Right.
Okay. And then there was one item, a miscellaneous increase of $7,000, and I was just wondering, since expenses are tight, what, 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 what that, what that's about?
It's done.
Let's see. And by the way, it appears that you've, you've had a, it looks like you have two kind of iterations of the information, one that shows the expenses and the revenue.
Broken up by the ones.
Side by side. That's, that makes it a lot easier to, to follow what's going on.
Thank you.
I think it was a central service.
Is it just miscellaneous?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's called, yeah, it's miscellaneous. It's number 3059418-00-00.
Which fund, which?
It's in Capital Project... It's in capital project expenses, expenditures. Miscellaneous. And the budget was for 4,120 and the amendment calls for 11K and 244.
At the top, yeah.
I'd have to pull it up on my
Can you repeat the number for me, please? 300?
It's the top of capital projects. Right below the inter-fund loans, personal Florida.
I can add that for you at the next council meeting, a breakdown of that.
And then, I guess my final question is, I know that we're, that a transfer was made, a fun, an inter-fund transfer was made to cover the emergency expenditures of last summer. And I'm curious to know how we're addressing interest expenses. What interest are we paying ourselves in our repayment plan?
I can send you a copy of the, I can send it directly to you, Doug, a copy of the repayment or that went through council.
Are we paying?
Yeah, the council
Oh, yeah.
We're paying some interest and then we are paying, yeah. I think it's a requirement.
Yeah, I believe it's a 1%.
1%?
Yeah, it's by state statute, it's required that we do what it would earn in the, in a trust fund or a CD fund.
Okay.
So I'll send that to you.
Thanks a lot. Do you have my email?
Yes.
Thank you for your service.
Anybody questions?
Since Doug is in the public here, then I guess we can just move on to the council portion of AB 18033C, the budget amendment from us, the council. There will be another change, at least one more than I know of. And the changes that were requested two weeks ago were added to this one. And then Mike Public Works just gave us something, so for admin, I mean, in two weeks, we'll have all the final stuff.
Well, admin, did we, two weeks ago, we discussed the budget at that time. Yeah, the staff was present. Everyone was present, I guess we had a good discussion and we were supportive of the budget amendment.
So since this is the first time for me doing this on council, it's really hard to keep track when there's like three versions that keep coming up. So at what point is it really, you know, I'm just trying to learn the budget too, right? So it's a process for me. And trying to go through it and sort of understand how it works, just even reading the document. Then I guess I'm wondering, at what point does it make sense to really use the fine tooth comb? Because I can't do that between every iteration. So and I can't have it in front of me and be different and be able to vote on it knowledgeably. Does that make sense?
Yep. So you're, maybe just, your main concern is so many different, so many different budgets are coming that it's hard to
So many versions of the same
Yeah, of the same with a little bit of a tweak here or there that you, it's like, because I hear you, I totally could relate to that because it does seem like we can get a lot of budgets, the same one, but it's a different one maybe every two weeks during the season because it's the middle of the year budget season. It's kind of like, get ready for October, September, you'll get 10 of these things. I don't know, I, I, I know where you're coming from because when I first started, the budget was so foreign. We had a way different process. It's gotten a lot easier, especially when we have the graphs and a lot of colorful pictures, which in my opinion did help me. To other people, maybe didn't help them as well. But I don't know how to make it, and Sean is, I think he's doing a good job on make it simpler. But it's just kind of that learning curve of, of, of doing the budget. Like you'll get so many because there's so many little changes that can happen or something's missed and
Right, we're only here every two weeks too, obviously. There's things happening, I guess.
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying like, oh, that's, we can't change it or there's nothing else we can do to make it simpler. So, but that's just kind of the process that I've seen that's always been the same thing over every year is you'll see a lot of these throughout the year.
Right.
And it sucks, you almost have to label what it is right when you get it so you don't get it confused with the one that you just got last week.
So I get
I guess I would say that the fine tooth comb is and that they're, that the one that we will see in two weeks at the admin building will also be a little different than the one we're looking at tonight. And, and, and I'm wondering, you know, what about highlighting those changes? Because there's not very many usually between the different
I can do that.
That would be so helpful.
I can easily do that, yeah.
That might, that might, that might help some of the confusion and it helps you zero in on where the changes are.
Right, because that helps, giving us a clue what's different every time.
I can also get it to you, like, right after this meeting, I'll make the changes that you guys asked for. And then I can get it to you within a week. And you guys can have a little bit more time with it before the next meeting.
As long as it's what's going to be at the next meeting. If it changes between meetings, then I don't even want to see it because that's when it just
Yeah. Unfortunately, that can happen sometimes because we get an updated number and we just want to put in the best numbers we can get. So sometimes
Is that something you could email to us? Like just the updated numbers, the agenda number in here? You know, and just the, so we know what to look for?
Yeah, absolutely.
Next time it comes in print?
Absolutely. But I would also say that this is pretty close to where we're going to end up. So this is the time for the fine tooth comb and bring back suggestions for changes to it at this point. We're there.
Okay, well, I do, I mean, I'm not, I don't really want to go through my whole list at this point because I think I need to reconsider because I just made notes on things but didn't necessarily, aren't necessarily worthy or maybe I just needed some more understanding.
That would be great, it'd be a great discussion.
Okay.
You can also come visit me anytime and I'll, I'll walk through any questions you have.
Okay.
So we'll be discussing it again in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, right, before entering.
Well, I mean
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully it is recommended for
Yeah, sounds like, recommended, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Other questions? Okay, well, that's enough on the amendment for now. And we can move on to AB 18035. We got the two contractual claim. The first police services contract is the animal control. A B 18035.
Second.
So staff had gone back to Rob in Clayallum and discussed the 6% issue. There was some issue about the Kitcom cost. There was the opting out stuff, which apparently not be permitted, but there was a change in the meeting. And then Rob got us the final contracts we're going to. And we did separate the animal control and the law enforcement, which we needed, and South film used for their own bookkeeping. And Clayallum had not normally done, but it's kind of combined it all. So they were very, yeah. They were good about fixing it for both us and South film, so it helps us more. And for example, the 6%, up to 6%. They sent it to us and it said 6%, it didn't say up to. So treasurer called down there and said, well, we can change that. And she mentioned, I am changing to 4% as well. And he did, so, so up to 4%. And I think they have to request in writing what the change would be. And that's for next year, of course, that's, that'll be the 2019.
But it doesn't have to go to council unless it exceeds the 4%?
Oh, I see, right.
So is that, okay, we got this in the beginning, is that, is that the only change in this with the animal control that
Yeah, the separate one contract into two, they changed the 6% to 4%.
Some termination language change, shorten the timeline and the amount we would have been?
If we were to contract with someone.
Oh, gotcha.
And then, and then the Kitcom cost, I think Clayallum is going to So ultimately, it worked out pretty well. And it's all, it's retroactive to generally first, so we've been paying the amount already. So it doesn't really change what we're already doing and the agreement that we have with the chief.
How far off is that in our budget from what we
It's right where it says. We, we knew the number they were shooting for.
Oh, well, we did the original 2018 budget.
Yeah, it was budgeted, yeah.
Yeah, we knew about it, it was just a matter of getting the contract language satisfied.
That was particular, but we had it on two lines and they gave us one line.
Right, okay.
That didn't change at all. We have an extra law enforcement officer out there.
Yeah, good job on saving 2%.
Who's on working now. And he was pre-trained, he didn't come out of the academy or whatever, so he's already patrolling.
Did you get to meet him?
I've seen him, I've not met him.
So under responsibilities of Clayallum Non-Aanimal Control 5.2, it says which determining which hours to patrol, the chief of police will make this determination and shall take into consideration any specific requests. By the mayor, so is there any specific requests for weekend defenders on this lane? Because if I go down there on a Sunday, I can see so many people parking illegally. We had somebody parked in the middle of the road last Sunday for like an hour.
I can tell you they have been doing it. You guys, not, not you, it was the previous council asked that they start enforcing parking a little stricter downtown. And I've noticed on our court finds that they have been doing that and we've actually received
Also, I've been calling every Sunday and Saturday. I mean, I've called Kitcom probably 30 times in the last three weeks.
Good work, it's working.
But it says that special request from the mayor. Can we request that they're here on the weekends more?
It could.
Is that, does that take away from
Well, I happen though, one thing that chief would say, and he could certainly kind of speak to this, is that they spend a lot more time on the weekends here in Roslyn because of the night activity.
Right.
So Roslyn is
So we're already getting more
That takes us away from the daytime.
It could, you know, in theory.
In theory, yeah.
I'm wondering if there's more revenue to be made from the daytime activity.
Well, yeah, enforcement I don't see as a revenue thing. I understand that the parking and the traffic is terrible.
Right.
They all understand. That's why we're doing the sidewalk project, that's why.
Right, and actually the sidewalks will eliminate a lot of that illegal parking. I'm sure of it. But it's just so frustrating. You can't even park in front of Harper's on the weekend to save your life.
And the post offices.
Right, same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, I could certainly talk to chief about it. I know as was stated that the ticket revenue was increased.
Yeah, and that's what I'm speaking of. It's like, I think there would be worse ticket revenue on a Saturday at 1:00 in the afternoon than there is on Saturday night, I would think. But I'm not, I don't see that. I'm running out of that link.
I know we absorb a lot of the hours that we're logging on, on Saturday, Friday night.
Good.
And unfortunately, there's flights and things that they get called up for
Yeah.
Which dings us for hours.
But I encourage anybody like to call. Like, we see that, it's disrespectful to our town. So it's just like, might as well call and have, make them up a day.
We had four cars parked diagonally in front of the monument the other day. I was just, I
It's ridiculous.
I just had to go home.
I mean, I'm ready to put no parking signs.
Right, a big
Make our own traffic tickets.
Or just red, striped. I know that the Heritage House is doing a sidewalk, something around in front of that. Maybe when that happens, we could make it more, maybe red or something. Just make it more obvious.
Right, yeah.
Because the sign's kind of
It's, yeah, very small.
Yeah, yeah.
True. People don't notice it, it's off to the side.
Well, yeah, that one.
Yeah.
So it's Put up a tree.
Call the question, I think, right?
Okay, so all in favor of AB 18035, the animal control?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then AB 18036 is the actual law enforcement contract. A B 18036.
Aye, second.
Further discussion is the same, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So AB 18035 and AB 18036 will pass. Last on these are AB 18034A, the photograph logging contract. They, we got better numbers, more accurate numbers and more complete numbers for the contract that you guys have already agreed to. I'm sure they're in there, do we need to pass it as well, though? So we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve AB 18-034A.
Second. So, yeah, we've got more final numbers. Unfortunately, the price of logs changes all quickly, so when they found out
Do they go down recently?
It's gone down a little bit because of China tariffs and those kind of things. But it looks like, you know, there's been a bit of good news in the auto industry with China, so hopefully that goes across to all the countries, so China, the country. And certainly the demand for logs is still there. Very high, so I don't expect it to crash. But we are
Now, we started cutting, right?
Road building is complete. I know that they, they may have already started cutting out.
Okay.
It'll, should be full force next week, for sure.
It's all been flagged?
Yeah, this side, yeah, and they'll start flagging the second side. Yeah, it's all flagged, landing flag. Any more discussion on that one? AB 18034A, the code credit logging contract, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we got the mayor, council concerns our initiatives?
I've got a little list of things.
Go ahead.
I'll try to do it super fast, though. So I called into the Kitas County Conservation District meeting, which was two weeks ago or so. And they ratified our annexation into Conservation District. And so now they have to, it has to go through the state auditor. So it probably won't really be official until August. There will not be a charge in, for Roslyn property owners in 2018. It will start in 2019. And I'm waiting for some, a little bit more information, kind of an info sheet, I think could help, be helpful for people just to sort of talk about what it is. But some, they did say they could, if we can come up with our list of priorities, we can start working with them. There might be some sort of low hanging fruit, easy projects that they could help fund this year, even though we're not putting in money. They said they would be willing to consider that. And I
Give examples of projects?
I had, remember when I said I found that thing I wanted?
Right, that was way back.
Well, so it's, you know, kind of generally natural resource, around natural resources. And I know it's so close here. Firewising is one I can think of off the top of my head. Fuels reduction, firewising, GIS.
Right.
If anyone knows what GIS actually stands for, that'd be
It's like what they're, I think they're, what they're radar imaging, like they were doing at the cemetery.
I believe that's a communication system?
There you are.
GIS is geographic information system.
Geographic information, okay. So they can assist with that. Land use, stormwater, water supply.
Stormwater.
Yeah, so there's lots of opportunities. And I told them, you know, we're working on our capital facilities project.
Is that firewising within the town?
Or because Yeah, so this would be anything Yes, right, so anything within the city.
That would be really awesome because it lends to cleaning up properties. It looks better. And we firewise so hard around our two lots and it looks so much better.
Oh, yeah.
Trimmed up and
So, you know, I, they named those off and I said, probably all of those.
Any and all.
So I, I think, I guess the news there is that it's, you know, it's definitely a good opportunity for us. Lots of potential. And if we can come up with a punch list, something for them to start working on and figure out where they have some funds that help us.
One of the things that's come up at council a couple of times now has been looking at some of our alleys in terms of firewising
Alleys?
And those sorts of things. And that might be a pretty low hanging fruit.
Yeah, there are some alleys that are
Well, and I, what I don't know, because I just don't know enough about their system Well, and I, what I don't know, because I just don't know enough about their system yet, is in terms of, I mean, I'm assuming this is come, it all comes from our city. In terms of how we request projects, but whether, like you're saying, if there's individuals, homeowners, if there's some kind of.
Even cleaning the alleys.
But, yeah.
Because you'd be cleaning.
That's a real big start. That's a big start, so.
And then, once we determine what they can do, I mean, we'll put a flyer with the bill and just say, you know, if you're interested in having bulk firewising of your property, you know, we'll pull a list together.
Yeah.
And there's also a lot of vacant lots to be considered, or lots that are not developed that have high grass, very dry fruit trees and, you know.
For sure.
Lots to look at.
Those are both good suggestions, yeah.
So, I will, we can start with that.
Yeah.
That's one thing.
Like you said, I think that can be a low hanging fruit, that can maybe go easy. It's the time of the year.
Right.
Get it while it's low and cut them down now.
Yeah.
Well, I will ask them about that.
Well, I think the GIS could be really low hanging fruit too, because they can go to hydrants, you know, they can go to maybe water meters.
Yeah, I guess I would be, I mean, I don't know what our needs are in terms of that, so that I would need some direction, I'd be happy to help keep things moving forward with them and liaise with them.
I remember that the hydrant thing came up a lot and you're going out, because obviously all these out of town people want to know where all the hydrants are. And we have a list, but it'd be nice if we had a computer.
Computer version, right.
Put it on their phone.
GIS software is something staff has been asking for for years, and we've never been able to afford it. And there's some buy-in options that are fairly cheap.
Training.
Michelle would be thrilled.
That makes things a lot easier, doesn't it?
It does, yes.
Yeah, any other ideas, suggestions, I guess, along my way?
Something that's in time to argue.
We, we do, yeah, so they wouldn't really be able to actually start anything until the auditor approves it. But doing our planning on our end and kind of coming up with our wish list, I guess, and they can see where, they know where their funding at least is and what we would have for the rest of the year.
Cool.
That's that, and then I have, I just want to try to report from the CAC meetings, since I'm going to those, trying to make this whole liaison thing make sense. They, some of their concerns or thoughts, really just trying to report some of that, is keeping the money that we do earn from the logging project in the forest because of the mitigation that we're going to need to do, as well as. It's expensive to maintain our forest in the way that we're supposed to, according to our land stewardship plan.
We'll need to do firewising again, for example.
Right, so, and Mitch brought up, in addition to fire, a big concern that he has and that anything exists is flooding. I don't have anything specific on that, I just want to bring it, you know, kind of bring it to forefront and mention it, because we, it's not something that we necessarily think of until it's coming at us. Whereas now, we've been a little bit more aware of fire from last year. And I am talking to the Tribune to try to get an article in there, hopefully the following week about the closure, they were out of time for this one, but get something in there about the rough closure, since that's going to be an ongoing thing. And, and we talked about tracking the money that comes in and out for the logging project, so we actually know, like, how much are we, you know, how much, did they sell this week, or how many logs went out, how many bore feet it turned into? So that we can see what our, you know, how close we are to that point two and, and eight hundred thousand in expense, whatever it is.
Speculative.
That's that. That's all.
Well, I got one real quick here, so our lodging tax committee, as you remember, Johnny retired and Jeff has reworked himself, and so, and Andy, I think you were on it. So, we don't have anybody technically on, so we need three people. It would be best if we had one elected on it. I think there's a meeting in about a month.
Early June.
Early June, okay, about three weeks or two weeks.
Do we know when those meetings are, by chance?
They're sporadic.
They're all over the place, but they're.
Oh, is that the one they move around?
Days or times?
Both.
Yes.
How do we find out when they are?
I mean, you, I can volunteer.
The committee sets those dates.
Okay. And then are they actually posting?
So, then if you're on the committee, you have a say about when the date is, okay. I'll volunteer.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's crucial too, just to, because we've had this in the past, is to attend especially the last, and you probably speak better on this, because I admit part of this process.
When they divide up the money, when they're, when we're sitting.
Okay, just tell me when, it's imperative, and I'll be there.
And it's like, always like a Wednesday, all day. No, serious, eight, nine, ten hours.
It was two days this year.
It was two days this year.
It made Jeff go not want to do it anymore, and people from Clealum, and we've had representatives from Roslin not show up, and that's when we lose the money, so just again, just the importance of, this is where you almost, you have to go to that meeting, because then we lose our representation.
Right, and you lose your options.
I'm just saying, just, I want to stress that to anybody.
Well, no, actually, I have Wednesday off this year, so that's cool.
Well, that, that's where it's been, that's not, this is a moving target.
I'm sure, the committee can be steering.
Yeah, just make sure they know.
I can steer where it goes. I'm pretty flexible, honestly.
With the reminder that Commissioner Jewell will not be part of it.
Do you vote what?
Will not be part of it.
Okay.
So, will be changing even more.
Okay.
But Amy McGuffin, I met with Amy McGuffin, the chamber head, and she's, she wants to work with us, she wants to put a class up here, we requested, she really, in my opinion, I thought she really wanted to reach out and make this process a lot more seamless. She knows that Ms. Rodine had some comments to say, she wants to help correct those, but again, I think, joining, taking advantage of the chamber and putting them to it to help, even though they're not, they're helping putting this on, but they're not, it's not them initially, it's the county commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce is here to help too, so I just think that.
Just got to see, the Chamber of Commerce has a lot of money from the lodging tax.
They do, yeah.
They get a lot of money.
And like you're perfect to make.
Get that money.
I'll get that money.
Mayor, is this something we should reach out to on Facebook to see if community members would like to get involved?
Yeah, we could, Leah, I need.
I can do that, I can put it on.
You've been doing a great job of it.
It's slowly trying to get information on there.
I just got a couple, I wanted to thank the participants in the bike race, I forgot the names, I'm not going to butcher the bike race, but it was the youth bike race that happened this last weekend. I thought it was, I went to a monster truck show in Yakima, but I got to see half of the craziness that was going on here.
It was great.
And it was an awesome event, especially because it's all about kids. Next year, after we're done working in the forest and so forth, I would, I want to make sure that Roslin's the highlight of it, that we put it on. Inland Networks donated all their property, along with Greg Olson's property, and I, next year, I just think that this is Ros, this is an event that Roslin needs, it's like the start of the year, with the farmer's market coming up and Father's Day weekend, then it's the trailer rally, and it's, it's just event after event after event. So, I want to, I want to make sure that we keep these kind of events going here, because those events make us, make the town money, they make it poppy, and it almost didn't happen this year. And I would have hated to see those thousands of people that were here not show up here and spend money and contribute to our town. So, next year, I definitely want to, I want to have the city work with that organization and make sure that we keep it here. I just, I even reiterated to them the safety of the kids, making sure to look both ways because of the construction, but keep that going too, is the safety, because that's, it just takes one accident for that thing to be ruined. But, that being said, also, we've talked about two meetings ago about the property on nine oh three that Public Works has purchased, and they're going to put the public, they're going to move the Public Works facility from downtown Clealum, that's hidden behind Price Chopper, and move it to across the street from our school. And, yeah, some people can say that this is Roslin and that's not Roslin, but you, seeing to Clealum City Council's last meeting, council member, Stephen.
Harper.
Har, thank you, Stephen Harper presented that it is the connection between our towns, it's the hub between our towns. I want to throw in that, yeah, we, we asked to swap properties, I want to eliminate that totally, I don't even want to have that on the table. I just want to throw that, we don't, my personal opinion, somebody that's going to live here, I pray that I live here the rest of my life, is I don't want to see a Public Works facility on nine oh three, and the only way that that's going to work is if we get our towns together and speak against it. The Clealum City Council's strong against it, I think Roslin should be strong against it too, because sooner or later, we're going to look at that thing and go, we had a choice and we didn't follow through with it, we just let the county go on with what they wanted to do to our upper county. They have five acres out on Lambert Road in Clealum that they could go to. I think that if we really care, we should look at this situation, drive by it and think, do you really want a Public Works facility there? I think back in the day, they hid it behind Price Chopper building, because that was back in the forties or the thirties, and now we're going to put it so everybody can see it. It's going to cause congestion off of the kids coming to school and our parents, they're going to be bringing trucks in and out of there, and I really think it's the worst place they could put that. I also, I don't even know, they get it public, but we did samples, we did soil samples, we did three of them, two in number five, one straight out of our coal pile, one straight out of our rock pile, and I did one in between Crystal Creek and the transfer station gate. And those soil samples came worse than those two soil samples that came from the coal miner, from the coal mine slags and the tail rock, tailings. That's all going into Crystal Creek. Also, if you go back there, you'll see nothing but a bunch of garbage. They don't care enough to take care of that, I don't, we need to care about our upper county, not let people just, hey, this is going here and this is how it's going to be. There was no discussion about it, we never were told about it or asked about it, it was just, we bought the property and here it is. So, sorry about my soapbox, it's just, I don't want to get, I don't want to have things diluted, because I know where the trade and blah blah blah. But the final thing is, do you want to see the Public Works facility on nine oh three across from our elementary playground? Yeah.
They have to get a zone change.
They got to go through their CEPA process.
Right, and then they have to, the permits have to.
Yeah, they just have a name. Yeah, but they want to break, they want to try to break ground this fall. I just know that, I know, but I don't want the upper county to, or I just don't want us to miss an opportunity to not have another ice sore on our, the gauntlet.
It would be, we would then too, to try to, as soon as we're informed about what's happening with it, make sure people, that our residents are informed about it, so if they want to go make their own voice heard, then.
Yeah.
It does carry weight, if the city weighs in and goes. We think it's a good idea or we don't think it's a good idea?
Letting people know now, a lot of people don't read the Tribune or, you know, but they'll be on Facebook, younger people.
But I, Facebook can always, always be, it's a useful tool, but it can be so full of BS that it can be a deterrent.
That's why you turn off commenting before you.
Well, well, it's still good though.
It's just informational, this is going to happen if you do this.
Turn off comments on Facebook.
I do all the time.
But like, but like what Andy's saying, and I hope, I've talked to Jay McGowan, the Clealum mayor, and I'm going to, I'm going to keep asking them, is what can they do as a city council to take action against saying, hey, we don't want this here? We, you, you didn't get a chance to work with us, we didn't get a voice in this, and this is between the two hearts of our cities, that they're making decisions from the lower county that are going to affect our upper county. So, what are we going to do about this? We're just going to say, well, it's part of the county and it's, there's a substation there, there's a garbage dump there, and you're just going to add it to the ice source? I think we're going to have a horrible congestion problem, and I think we're going to not be happy with it in ten years, saying, we could have done something. We could have moved it off of nine oh three, or just ask them, please don't put it in nine oh three. Most of your equipment goes up to Vantage, or sorry, not Vantage, but it goes down to Thorpe and it goes up to Hayek, it goes up to Tiana Way, yes, it goes up to Ronald, but put it strategically where you're not going to be putting too much traffic in downtown Clealum. You're always going to put it in Roslin, because you got to go to Ronald, but in front of our kids, in front of where we all have to take our kids or pick them up, so, sorry. Get a little passionate sometimes.
So, you're going to keep us informed when the news occur?
Yeah, I definitely will.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for listening.
Well, I mean, there is one other thing here, not something to move on tonight, but it is the question of making a formal comment on this project from the city of Roslin, and that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
So, how do we explore that topic?
Would that be during the CEPA process?
It doesn't have to be, I mean, that is a place we can make specific comments, you can weigh in before that.
I have a suggestion for this? Maybe add it to a future council agenda and have Michelle here to comment on it, I know they are asking for access to some water and sewer in order to be able to build that, and maybe we'll take an active council to approve that, so she might be able to help you guys a little bit with that.
I think a discussion agenda is appropriate.
Well, and I know Commissioner Jewell was here and kind of told us, right, here's what we're planning to do.
He told us.
So, I guess, you know, for me to, I would like to know about the decision-making process and, you know, what other options would there be? Because they, obviously, it's something they want to do, right? So.
I'm interested to, how far do you see humans?
Where with the city of Clealum, you know, primarily, because it's obviously, you know, it looks like they, they want to put it somewhere around where we are here in upper county that, or to move that one, that are there any other options, you know? Or is it just trying to stop where it is and then they have to go back to the drawing board?
And like I said, I looked on the county website, that's their website, they do have five acres off Lambert Road, which does have water up on the prop, some water on the property, but they have five acres there that can be utilized. There is options out there. I think this was the easiest and the most convenient, they bought the property, it's black ground, it's centrally located, I think it was just so easy peasy, can get it done and get it out of the way. I don't think they really took into consideration what you're adding to our community. I think so, but again, that's just a opinion. But I'd love to hear out more, if there is, there is a suitable reason why they picked that, that specific location, because there's gold there.
I think what, what Commissioner Jewell said, which is probably their main way of thinking, is it's easy access on I ninety. I mean, that was the first point that he said, and it probably is one of the most important points.
Which isn't necessarily, and I'm not arguing that, but I'm just.
Well, no, I mean, I think they need towards Hayek, they're, they get right on there through Bullfrog and on, on I ninety.
But now we're going to add more traffic to Bullfrog.
Well, that's, we are going to have more traffic to Bullfrog.
I would think two roundabouts would be kind of a leg up to that I ninety.
You would think, but.
Large equipment.
Yeah.
I don't think that Lambert property is a. I don't think that Lambert property is, is that great.
On Bullfrog. The old big UGA.
I agree, if the city's had a comment, and I would assume, so Katie would have a comment, especially if this can go right through the head of everyone. Certainly has a similar line. Well, do you guys want a agenda item to discuss this?
I'm not opposed to it.
Maybe some more information on...
I'm not opposed, but more information would be...
Yeah, without more information, okay. So it'll either be two weeks or a month out, depending on their hearings and what information we'll get.
I'd also like to know what the city, Clealum, city council and the mayor thinks about it. I, yeah, I will want to dig to see what his take is. Yeah, I mean, if we have a unified, um, stance on it.
That would be preferred. All right.
Motion to adjourn. I second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
May you adjourn.